All right. Good evening, everyone. It is the eighth of February 2022. Hope everybody has made your orders for Valentine's Day. It's a little reminder, word to the wise out there. You're joining the Athens Clark County Commission and myself, your mayor, for a three item agenda this evening. And really excited. We're going to knock these out of the park. So first, it's going to be a presentation from our external auditors, followed by an update on the cost of building renovation. And then finally, discussion of the Athens Clark County Government Strategic Plan, which we've been working on for many months. So I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Manager Williams so he can introduce Josh Carroll, our CPA from Malden Jenkins.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'll be brief, but the external audit, and Mr. Carroll will talk a little bit about this, is not to be confused with any internal program, programmatic audits. It's a financial audit that's required by law and is a healthy thing for organizations to do, to have somebody come in from outside and, and do some testing of, of our finances to make sure everything's in order. So Mr. Carroll's here tonight from Malden and Jenkins to tell you the results of their analysis and open any questions that y'all have when he's done. Thank you, Josh, for being here.
Thank you, Blaine and Mayor Commission for having me. I'm going to share my screen. If I can figure out how to do that. Let's see. Share. And then, okay. Can everyone see that?
Yes.
Yes, I can.
Okay, okay, great. Okay, yeah. So as Blaine said, I'm gonna go over the results of the 2021 audit for Athens Clark County. It's as of June 30th, 2021, so it is a snapshot in time, six, seven months ago now. The county puts together a really elaborate annual comprehensive financial report, and this is just kind of a short summary of the overall audit and the results. This is kind of my agenda, what I'm going to go over, a little bit about the firm, the overall results of the audit, there's a couple of financial trends, and then I've got some comments and questions at the end. But if anyone on the meeting has any questions as I'm going, you can feel free to stop me as I'm going if you would prefer.
Josh, I have a quick, can you do a slide presentation so that the, your, it's, it's larger and we don't see the slides on the left? It's down there? Yeah, that one. Thank you.
Did that change it? Because it?
It did not. It should, okay, look a little bit to the right of it. You can slide, do the slider. Yeah, see if that makes it larger. Well, does anybody else know how to get rid of the tools?
The, the top ribbon, if you go to slideshow, like kind of right there in the middle, hit that, and then from beginning, and it should give you presentation view if you're on two monitors.
The presentation's also available on our website, so you can just up on your own screen if you like. That's what I'm doing.
Right. I, I just thought that public might be watching this and want to be able to see it better, but.
You could do it from the current slide, Josh, on the top left.
Top left?
Current slide. Just click on it.
Right there?
No, right there, the, yeah, that one.
It, it doesn't seem to be changing anything.
Oh, well, I, that's fine. No, no sense delaying your presentation, sorry.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry about that. Um, let's see where to pick up. So anyway, th- this slide is a little bit about Malden and Jenkins. Um, we do a lot of government audits. Um, it's about 30% of the firm's practice, and it's regional Southeast firm. Um, I was the director, I was ultimately responsible for the county's audit. I have 14 years' experience, and I spend 100% of my time doing state and local governments. And Verda Flumson did a quality control review as a partner, and she has over 20 years, and she does nothing but government audits as well. So we bring a lot of government experience to the county's audit. This slide, Blaine kind of already alluded to this, it's kind of like, what is an audit and why does the county hire Malden and Jenkins to do the audit? It's a, it's required by the official code of Georgia. Um, and the county goes through a competitive bid process, and they hire us to be a third party independent objective to look at your overall financial records, your compliance with federal grants and state laws. And we issue opinions on all of those. Um, we follow generally accepted auditing standards and government auditing standards. And, and as Blaine alluded to, the external audit is a little bit different than the internal audit. Internal auditors kind of go on throughout the year. They focus more on non-financial objectives. They usually kind of deal with special projects that might be set by management or the mayor and council. Whereas us as the external auditors, we focus solely, mostly on your financial records and issuing an opinion. And that process is done just annually, once a year. So kind of difference there, as Blaine talked about, between the internal and external audit. Starting here, the results, um, the, the statements are the responsibility of the county's management. Our objective as your external auditor is to express an opinion on your financial statements. We followed all the generally accepted auditing standards, government auditing standards, and we did issue an unmodified or a clean opinion, which is what you would hope to get. And so as far as we're concerned, the June 30th, 2021 statements are materially correct. Um, we also issued an opinion on your single audit, that's your federal grant compliance. Um, we go through a checklist every year, and we have to audit sometimes one program, sometimes three, sometimes four. This year, it was four separate programs. So we looked at the CARES Act, the two programs in the federal transit cluster, and your Clean Water Loan with GFO. We follow the compliance supplement, we looked at your grant agreements, and we tested samples of expenditures in all those programs, and our opinion indicates that the county spent that money appropriately. You guys followed your grant agreements with your agencies and the federal grant compliance supplement. So a clean audit from a financial side and a grant compliance side. Very good. Um, the next slide, these, I think if I was on the commission, I'd want to know, do we have any aggressive or unusual accounting policies or estimates or judgment that would kind of sway your financial statements? And, and you don't, we looked at all of them. They're very standard for what we see at other counties and unified governments in Georgia. We look at the pension and OPEB actuarial assumptions in the landfill, and those actuaries are very reputable. We look at all the assumptions they use, and we felt good about them. They don't seem to really sway or skew your statements in any way. Um, this slide, our relationship with management is good. The audit goes how it's supposed to go. We come in and we ask for a lot of information from finance and all departments throughout the county. Everyone provides what we need. It, it goes smoothly. It just kind of goes how it's supposed to work. So we have a great relationship with the county and its management. Um, we didn't have any audit adjustments or past adjustments. Um, so all the trial balances and financial records we received were correct through our procedures. Um, that's not the norm that we see with governments, especially governments the size of Athens, a lot of transactions, a lot of dollars flowing through. So the finance department does an excellent job accounting and reporting for all of that activity. And that has been the norm for a number of years that we've been doing the audit. Um, this slide here, we are independent. Um, we don't do anything other than the external audit. So we don't get paid for any advisory services or any management services that might influence our opinion as your external auditor. Um, these next slides, I'm going to go into the kind of the financial trends. This first slide is your general fund, fund balance as a percentage of your expenditures and transfers out. Um, we have an internal policy of two months, and that is in line with what the GFOA recommends government sets. So our policy's in line with that, and our fund balance is well above that, um, about 27%. And as you can see in the graph, we've been building our fund balance up from 2018 through 2021, and I believe that is a direct result of some of the objectives that the mayor and the commission had put in place. I think that was a goal, and so we've been achieving that goal. Um, we do have about 5% of that fund balance is assigned. That's 5.6 is for our 2022 budget, and we still have a couple million left in the resiliency package. It's going to be spent in 2022, I believe. So all in all, a healthy fund balance, um, reserve in our general fund. This slide is the general fund budget to actual. Um, our revenues came in above budget by about 7%. Most of that was due to the CARES Act. Um, it was kind of a one-time grant. We spent a lot of that, we incurred a lot of those expenditures in the 2020 audit, and we got the revenue in 2021. Um, so that's the primary reason there. And then we were still kind of closed, you, you know, because of COVID, so our expenditures came in under budget. That was true for all departments. Um, and we still have the $2 million left over for the resiliency package. So all departments seem to be conservative in their spending. All departments were under budget. And so that's kind of a snapshot of our budget to actual in our general fund for June 30th, 2021. The next few slides are kind of trends of our revenues and expenses, and just kind of, they're very consistent over the years. This slide, property taxes and sales taxes continue to be our largest source of revenue. That's the norm for most governments in Georgia. Um, the taxes are right at about 50%, and they've been pretty flat, growing a little bit without change in our digest. The economy's been fairly good, so our digest has grown. Next slide, our expenditures by function. Again, they're pretty consistent. Public safety continues to be the largest expenditure. That's also the norm for most county governments in Georgia. In the maroon color, you do see a big jump there in 18 to 19. We reclassified the sheriff's office into the judicial function. So that's the reason for the big jump there. Um, that just was to align us with the state chart of accounts. And the other thing here is our transfers out from 20 to 21, and from 19 to 20 to 21 have decreased a little bit. And so that's part of the reason we've increased that fund balance that was a few slides ago. Um, and this slide, again, our personal services continue to be the largest expenditure by type. Here, you continue to see, as I mentioned, the transfers out decreasing. That's built our fund balance up. And we do have a big jump in the independent agencies expenditure this year, and the majority of that was the money that we transferred to set up the Joint Development Authority. So that was kind of a one-time expense, um, in 2021. Um, so the next couple of slides are our comments and recommendations, and these are a repeat from last year. We have some segregation of duty, um, comments with our appointed and elected officials. Um, they've been around for a few years. We've cleaned some of them up through mitigating controls, but these still do exist. It's not something I think we should be overly concerned with, but it is something we highlight. They're just a management comment. We don't consider them significant enough to be a finding that actually makes it into your audit report. Um, so we just want to keep the commission aware of them. I know that finance is working with the magistrate court currently to put in some mitigating controls. So they're still there, and, you know, they're hard to get eliminate sometimes because it's often not cost-effective to hire a new employee to do some of these different accounting cycle functions, just to get rid of these internal control comments. So they may never fully go away, but I know we're doing everything we can to put in some mitigating controls to eliminate these as we can. And, and these are also fairly normal at county governments. The appointed and elected officials often just don't have enough employees in their office to segregate all these duties. Um, so it's definitely not isolated to the appointed and elected officials at Athens. Um, that, the next couple of slides, there, there are repeats of those. And then, um, Gasby is always busy going forward. These are the new Gasbys that are on the horizon. Gasby 87 is applicable for next year. It deals with leases. We're going to have to kind of evaluate what leases we have, and we're going to have to put those up on the balance sheet. A lot of these are already booked on the balance sheet currently, but some of them we're just expensing as we go, and the standard's going to change those. Um, so I don't anticipate it being a large number. Certainly nothing like when we had to put on our pension and OPEB liabilities, but that will be the biggest change for the 2022 financial statements. And then we do continue to provide free continuing education for all of our clients. Um, I know a lot of the people in the finance group have attended those and take advantage of that offering. And if, if there's anyone else at the county that would like to learn more about governmental accounting or get some free continuing education, I can certainly get anyone signed up. And that's pretty much the end of my presentation, and we really enjoy working with the county. As I said, we have a great relationship, and the audit goes really well, and I'll be happy to answer any questions if anyone has anything, or if Blaine or David have anything to add, please feel free.
Blaine, David, before I garner questions from commissioners, any, any follow-up thoughts or observations?
Um, no, I think Josh covered everything pretty well in that presentation.
Great.
All right. Commissioners, any questions? That, that question from Commissioner Hool.
Thanks. Um, to Commissioner Davenport's chagrin, I'm sure. And I think, I think we're in kind of video inception right now.
Yeah, Josh, I think you're, you're sharing your screen, which is sort of a reshare of the, of the Brady.
Yeah, thanks, thanks, Josh. This was a great presentation, real concise and informative. Um, really appreciate the great work our finance department is doing. It's always, always good to get good news. Um, I, my one question is about the recurring recommendation. I recall it from last year, which was my first year on here. So I guess I'm curious, you know, how long that recommendation for the new positions to segregate the duties exists, has existed for. And to clarify, would that be a recommendation for four new positions, one for each of those offices? Or could that be fulfilled by creating a new position that shares the duty across those different offices? I think it was the probate court, municipal court, magistrate court, and sheriff's office.
Yeah, so to answer the, the first part of that question, um, how long they've been around? They, they've been there at least five years, but, but like I mentioned in the slide, they have, there, there used to be more. And so the commission and the county have worked hard to, you know, do what we can to get rid of the comments that we had. So they have come down in the quantity of the segregation duties. And the, the second part of your question is, I, I, I think that's probably an internal decision, but I would definitely think that one position or one employee could certainly handle mitigating the duties for multiple offices, for sure. Um, but that would be more of a, kind of internal, what Athens decides to do. But I certainly think one employee could handle multiple offices, for sure.
Okay, good question, Commissioner. Um, and we did take care of, the clerk of courts was one of those that showed up, and a few years ago, we added a position to help take care of that. Some of the smaller offices, it didn't seem to make a lot of sense, but we can certainly investigate a shared position to try and, and bring those off of there.
And I guess just to clarify for myself how this works, does that have to come as a request from those different constitutional officers? Or is that something that the manager's office would kind of navigate?
Well, adding.
Who initiates the process, I guess?
Sure, sure. Well, when we were looking at a, a office by office perspective, that would come from them, but certainly we can, if we were going to do a collective position, and we could talk to the court's administrator about that, it could be that, you know, organizationally works with, with them, but we can investigate that.
Awesome. Thanks.
All right. Any other questions for Josh? Uh, Commissioner Myers, and then Commissioner Denson.
Yeah, uh, um, just on the, going along the same lines, isn't it, I guess it's already, and, and this would be Manager Williams who probably would sort of address this, you know, a division of duties within the office with existing staff. Um, and is that been explored in all ways? And the same thing, Josh, you referred to mitigating controls that were in place, and I'm wondering what you're referring to when you say that.
So a, a mitigating control would be, you, you know, kind of not the perfect control. It would not be a new employee, but it would, the mitigating controls mostly currently are some of the finance group is performing some additional review procedures that was a mitigating control that reduced the risk of the segregation of duties. And that allowed us to remove some of those bullet points that would have been in previous years. Um, so it's not a, a new employee or a perfect scenario, but it put a layer of another set of eyes in place is.
From our fin, from our finance department. That's correct.
It, it, yeah, it doesn't have to be the finance department necessarily, but the finance department i- is the one that kind of put that layer or took on that role currently.
Thank you. And, and Manager Williams, I'm sure it's been explored already, whether or not there, that division of duties could be shared within those departments, I assume. It's all been explored.
Yes, they're so small, um, you know, that it hasn't been feasible, but what Commissioner Hool was suggesting is, you know, could be a workable solution.
Tim?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, and thank you for this presentation, Josh. Always helpful and appreciated. Uh, just have two quick questions for staff. Just, uh, because it was on here, I was thinking about it. Uh, do we know what, uh, currently, uh, the general fund balance is looking like right now? Uh, where we're at in this year's budget at this, at this point? And if not, if that can just be emailed out to us. I don't want to put anybody in the spot, but yeah. And then my second question, the other one, is, uh, going to, uh, Commissioner Hool, Commissioner Myers, questions about the, the position or positions for segregation of duties in the courts. Um, I wonder if, uh, if, if we're looking into that, if we could also raise that with the court administrators, uh, if they could possibly be using some of the funds from that recent American Rescue Plan, uh, grant application they just put forward? Um, because I don't remember that being included and, and those positions being sought. But since this has been coming up for five years now as a recommendation, maybe that position should be prioritized.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, the, the only thing I would say to that is, you know, that, that American Rescue Plan is, is kind of a one-time funding. It's not an ongoing source of money that would fund that, uh, down the road.
Yeah, definitely true. Although the, what the proposal they put before us was all funding personnel positions. So I guess that's something to be dealt with one way or another, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
All right. Any others?
Kelly, my hand was up.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Um, I think that, and I'm, I'm sorry, everybody, I'm, I'm a little under the weather. That's why my camera's off, but, um, so I, I think this question is for, um, Mayor Gertz or the county manager. Since this has been, you know, just has not been addressed in a while, can we assume or can we plan to look at all? And I think this is what everybody was getting to, but do we, can, can we walk away from this meeting agreeing that this is something we're going to look at in this year's budget? Um, wherever the dollars come from, that we, you know, this won't get left off, uh, for this year's budget. And that'd be one of the things we could just check off our to-do list.
I guess what, what I'd say to, to start with, and then I'll pass it over to Manager Williams, is we'd probably want to interact with the court administrator to look at what maybe a sort of shared or clustered position would look like. You know, I have to be honest and say, I don't understand sort of from a kind of functional day in, day out basis, you know, um, exactly where that would rest, not, not to say that there couldn't be one. I think it's very obvious to it. But I think we would want to find out from them sort of what that ideally looks like. So, um, I think that would be our first area of inquiry. Uh, Blaine, did you have any other thoughts?
No, I, I'd just say, and, and we had this conversation with, with the external auditor, and this is not an unusual situation in similar court agencies across Georgia because of the small size of that, but it does not mean we need to continue to suffer that condition. And I mean, if the commission is interested in, in, you know, rectifying that, Commissioner Thornton, I'll, as I think Mayor Gertz suggested a good, you know, we need to talk to the courts and see and come to a a workable solution that, that they can manage. Uh, but either way, uh, I, I think I've heard from enough folks tonight, there's interest in exploring that. So I'm glad to do that and return to you in the budget season with, with what we found and what we recommend.
Thank you, uh, Captain Manager Williams and Mayor Gertz.
Commissioner Hool?
Thanks. And just following up on this, encouraged by this discussion, you know, do you anticipate, Manager Williams, that the sheriff's office would have to be separated from the courts because their functions are so different? Or, you know, if we're talking about a single position that can kind of run across these arenas, they'd be looped into?
We, I'd have to explore organizationally how that might work. Um, it, but it's a great question. There may be limitations to the shared position. Uh, but we can, you know, I, I think what everybody would like to do is check all, you know, next year, when we have the same conversation, see less of those. And so we can start making, um, headway in the right direction, hopefully.
All right, more to be announced. Uh, hang on tight, everybody. Josh, we appreciate your work. Thanks a ton for you and your colleagues. I look forward to seeing you next year, if not before.
Yes, thank you for having me. We enjoy working with the county.
All right. Have a great one. All right, everyone. Uh, second item this evening is an update on the SPOS 2011 project, the cost of building renovation. Um, it's one of the kind of last big-ticket items coming out of, coming out of the 2011 SPOS package, and, uh, so I'm going to turn it over to staff so they can go ahead and walk us through this.
And if I could, just set the stage real quick, Mayor. So a couple of things that Keith will walk you through. Uh, as you know, there's been some cost escalation. Uh, and so we're going to be asking you to make some decisions to support in general, the design that, that you had seen before. And then we're also hopeful, Mayor, to maybe have a little discussion about the potential, uh, types of tenants that you'd like to see, uh, in, in the Costa Building. Uh, you know, there's been a lot of different ideas, um, bandied about, but we'd like to bring some consensus to that and then tell you how the funding does or does not support the future build out. So we just wanted to bring it all to you in one, one work session and get some feedback from you, and then move forward with an agenda item in the upcoming cycle. So with that, Keith, I'll turn it over to you and Daniel.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Daniel's going to start us off, uh, tonight, and then I'll, I'll close this out with this. So Daniel, if you haven't met him, is a project manager, uh, in our office that, uh, is handling, picked up this in the design and is, uh, running with the Costa Building. He's also doing the Bishop Park project for us. Also did Dudley Park. So, uh, with that, Daniel, I'll turn it over to you.
All right. Uh, thanks, Mayor Commission, for allowing some, some, some of your time this afternoon to put forward this, uh, information. Today, I want to talk to you about the, the cost of building renovation and, uh, budget amendment. We'll take a, a few minutes to, to just re-review, um, the approved schematic design and some of the, the concept items that were, were implemented in that. Also, I'll look at what we had the architect, um, provide a, a estimate based on that schematic design, and then, uh, also the estimate that the CMIC risk contractor came back with based on their, their design development drawings. We'll review some, um, value engineering savings that we identified throughout the, the last few months. Uh, and then take a look at some of the additional scope reduction items that, uh, some additional savings that we found. Uh, and then I'll turn it over to Keith to, to review the SPOS 2011 program and project funds available for reallocation. And then, uh, uh, he'll walk you through the proposed revised project budget, and we'll open it up for questions at the end. So looking at the basement floor of the schematic design, um, before I do that, I want to just kind of point out a few project concept items that are applicable to all the floors. It was, with inside the bait, the building will do the hazardous abatement of the, the asbestos mold, um, and, and some of the lead paint that's found within the existing structure. We'll replace all the, the. We'll replace all the, the mechanical and electrical and plumbing elements of this project within the building. We'll add, uh, some, some interior insulation around, along the perimeter of the building. Um, to bring it up to code, we'll add the fire sprinkler system, um, code compliant stairs, ADA ramp. Uh, exterior, we'll place the exterior windows and doors, the floor and interior wall finishes. And since this was a, uh, industrial ice cream factory, we'll, we'll kind of keep that, you know, that industrial look and have those exposed ceilings throughout the, throughout the building. The schematic design on the basement floor, the intent is to try to, um, finish out 40% of this basement. Now, there is some, um, height constraints that, that kind of limit us to, to that particular amount. We will do some, uh, because of the mold, we will do, uh, basement waterproofing throughout the entire basement structure. There will be a set of code compliant stairs that go to the basement. Also provide a, a rough in plumbing for the basement and then potentially a communicable stair from the first floor down to the basement. On the first floor, uh, again, uh, there was a few accessibility issues that we had, uh, addressed to make the, the building occupiable. One was the code compliant stairs. Uh, there, there are two sets of stairs. There's one, uh, towards the center section of the building, which is stair two. And then part of the, the addition is the, the second set of stairs that will go from, um, the first floor all the way to the roof. On the east and west side of the building, we've got ADA compliant ramps. The elevator is located also in the addition, which, which is gurney, but has the capability of, of accepting a gurney. Uh, code compliant restrooms was another thing that we, we were adding to this. Um, one of the nice to have items was the East Side Plaza between the Board of Elections building and the Costa building. We also added a circulating walkway on the north side, which actually gives you access to the water department, uh, parking lot, as well as city hall parking lot. And then gives you access to the, the ramp that's going into the future park. And again, as was discussed in the earlier slide, replacing all the windows and doors. On the second and third floor.
Well, all right.
And both of these, uh, they're, they're pretty much mirror images. Uh, again, the, the stairs, code compliant stairs and ramp, uh, uh, and elevator, as well as the restrooms. We did add, uh, an, an additional interior restroom that was located on the south side of stair number two. Uh, we talked about adding, uh, kind of framing in, adding some new windows around the mural to try to frame in the mural and, and, uh, kind of give that mural a little, little more emphasis. Then on the rooftop, the, the, as part of the addition, the, the stairs and the elevator will extend to the roof. That, that's the intent. And then at the top of that roof, um, we would like to provide the 700 square foot rooftop terrace, which will also be recovered. By adding that, um, which also, also gives us the opportunity to provide a second and third level patio space, exterior patio space. Um, and again, the, on the, the rooftop itself, um, on the south side of the Costa building, that will be housed for the, uh, mechanical equipment, HVAC equipment. And then also, um, we're looking into potentially adding the, the solar array on top of that as well. The second stair will also continue to go to the roof so that the facilities can, can, uh, access the roof and access the, the HVAC, HVAC equipment that's there. I, I will point out that, uh, those items, that previous items that had the asterisk by it, those were either code or ordinance, uh, required items. So in April of 2021, uh, after Mayor Commission approved the schematic design, we had a local contractor, uh, provide an estimate based on that schematic design and a constructed, construction narrative provided by the architect. The estimate came back at just over $3.5 million. The architect then, um, the, uh, produced some, uh, 100% design development drawings, which, um, as for clarification, based on the level of detail and, uh, the level of specifications that they provided for the estimate to that, uh, RC of Risk firm, um, those were more like 50% construction drawings. They were at a, uh, a stamp substantially greater level than, than just standard design development drawings. Now, they provided an estimate early January, and that estimate came back to 6.88 million dollars. Uh, that's inclusive of, uh, all the, um, project concept items and the schematic design. Now that, that is substantially larger than what we had, uh, originally allocated for the construction budget. So we spent a few months going through and, and identifying some value engineering savings. Um, uh, more from a design, uh, aspect rather than trying to reduce the scope. So, um, and the north part of the addition, instead of doing, uh, deep foundations, we, we found that helical piers were, um, a, a better option. Um, as well as the, uh, removing the wa- exterior wa- waterproofing for the basement from the exterior to the interior. Because trying to dig out between the Board of Elections building and that retaining wall, um, required some substantial shoring to be able to, to, to get down to that, that level of the foundation. Um, we also reduced the allowance for the electrical costs, storm drain cost, uh, interior finishes. And then, uh, with the, with all those, uh, combined elements, we were, were able to save, um, 1.9 million dollars in construction costs, which brings that, um, new construction estimate down to 5.79 million dollars. To bring it down, uh, a little bit further, we kind of identified it's, identified some items. Uh, now these are, um, scope reduction items. Um, yeah, the rainwater harvesting system, the windows around the mural, basement renovation, the second and third floor interior bathrooms, the north circulating walkway, the alley plaza, and interior, um, communicating stair from the first floor of the basement. These, these items we identified that, that weren't, uh, necessarily a necessity, but we also didn't want to take any way, anything away from the, what we had presented, uh, to Mayor and Commission and still keep the, that, um, expectation of, of what we provided in the schematic design.
Okay. And so I'll pick up today. One of the things, um, as Daniel said, we, we were trying to maintain, uh, the design elements that we heard from Mayor Commission during that presentation of the schematic that, that you really liked. Uh, so we have gone to try to find some additional funding to, uh, cover those costs, uh, for those elements. And so there are these, these six line items that are available in our current SPOS 2011 program. Um, unallocated earned interest is, uh, just what it says, interest we've been earning over the life of the program. And, and historically in the previous programs, this money, and we have said this throughout the 2011 program, was held for these projects that were done later in the program to help cover escalation. This would take that balance down to zero, uh, so it does zero out all of that, uh, and would not be available for other projects. Uh, jail expansion, if you recall, several, well, probably a little over a year ago, uh, we did move all of that money out of the project. There was a purchase order that had some money left on it that didn't get expended, so that came back into it. Uh, this 12,000, 580, oh, zero, with that project back out. And project three and 10 both have, um, some money left in them. And as, as many of y'all were on the commission at the time, when we funded the construction for those projects, they needed additional funds as well. So we, uh, there was some, uh, earned interest that was moved into those projects. Um, and some other finished project funds were moved in. But the caveat when we moved them in, uh, was that we told Mayor Commission, once the projects were over, these funds would be available, uh, to be allocated to another project. So, uh, that's what we're doing with those. Dudley Park is finished, uh, this money is, is left in that project, uh, can be moved. And then program management, as you recall, when we set up the 2011 program, uh, we, we boiled three, pulled 3% out of the projects for, to cover program management. But when we did that, we also did not have a T-SPOS program going. So, uh, with the T-SPOS 2018, uh, when it came online, it was able to take some of the, the program management cost. And we've been also able to keep those costs down. We think we can pull 500,000 out of that. Uh, that still leaves 890,000 in that line item that could potentially be allocated to, um, a project in the future or, because I don't think we'll spend all 890,000 of that. Um, then that brings us to a total of a million, 743. So, uh, just to kind of for comparison, I wanted to show you the, the, this SD budget is the column that we presented at the time of the schematic design. Um, in the budget portion at the top, the only thing that's changed is we've added in this, uh, 1.7 million, a budget amendment to get us to a total of 6.9 for the project funding. Uh, money we've already expensed on design, starting demo, uh, other ally, items to be allocated for permits, uh, landscaping, F furniture, uh, FFNE. And then there was 250,000 that Mayor Commission, um, authorized us to move in there from the, uh, SPOS 2020. The renewable energy to cover the solar and the increased cost in window to try to get them to ultra efficiency. If the, uh, community, uh, advisory board agreed to that. So, and we're still working through that part. And that does still leave us with a little over a half million in contingency to get us to, uh, available for construction of this 5.2, uh, that meets the current GMP from the, uh, construction manager at risk. So next steps, uh, and if you're looking online, I did forget to include this slide in what we sent out. So this is an additional slide, uh, from what's available online. So currently we do have demolition and remediation is underway. Uh, we're under the process of selecting a commissioning agent for that, um, uh, for the, uh, um, oh shit, I'm drawing a blank. Get me out, Daniel. Uh, anyway, we're getting commissioning agent is currently being selected. We have an agenda report in the cycle, uh, for the February, March to set the GMP, which would be that 5.2 million. And then we're fin- finalizing the design and permitting, um, through March and then getting rid of construction manager would start construction in April. Uh, we, tenant selection, of course, we know that we, uh, Manager Williams talked about, we'd like to talk about that briefly to be determined. And then, uh, you know, we're hopeful, depending on that tenant fit out, move in, where, when we get a decision on that, uh, who's going in and, and what efforts are going to be, uh, done for that. We think completion would be somewhere around, um, first part of 2023. Um, this budget does not have money in it for tenant fit out. Now, your finished product would, would look like a, a finished building when we're done. It just wouldn't have office divider walls, uh, or individual offices or spaces like that. So we do have, we do have floor covering, we do have wall finishes, do have lighting, HVAC, all of those standard office building, uh, lookout, look. And with that, we'll turn it over to questions and I will take the presentation down so that we can see everybody.
Thanks for that, Keith. And, um, we'll, we'll talk first just about the kind of physical contours of the building, uh, for any questions there, kind of relative to the presentation. And then after we talk about the kind of physical structure itself, uh, we'll, we'll spend a little bit of time talking about the tenancy concept. Um, so let's see, I had, uh, Patrick. Muted, man.
I pulled on Mariah. Um, so, um, I wanted to talk about the, the funds. So if, if any of my colleagues want to talk about the structure itself, but the building looks, um, the schematic design looks great.
All right. Um, got, uh, let's see, Allison?
Um, yes, thank you. A great presentation. I'm so excited about this moving forward. My question's in line with the funding. Are you saying you want me to wait for that?
N- no, talk about that right now.
Okay, so, um, on the, the, the first topic with us still having other projects in this SPOS, um, the unallocated earned interest could be needed later. I'm, I'm, I'm okay. I follow the other designations of borrowing what's left over. Um, can somebody speak to me about how, if that's used now to keep this project going forward, when the old cooperative extension, um, if that were to be sold, would that money from selling it come back into this pool of money since, um, it funded the new one?
I, I would say, um, it, it could. And when we sell that, uh, we would look to, for you to direct where that funding would go. It was always contemplated that, that the SPOS would be reimbursed. And, and if you'll remember, we did have some overruns, well, I say overruns, there were some additional costs in various forms with the cooperative extension building. So that is certainly, uh, one option that has been talked about before. Yes.
Okay, so the 98, uh, the $97,000 that's on this list from project 10 is left over from the new cooperative extension?
That, that's correct. And that doesn't include any, any funding from the sale of the current property.
Okay, so even though it ran over, uh, Manager Williams, you're saying, I mean, we still have money left, left over?
Well,
For the new one?
I'm sorry, I, I may have misstated that. And that is exactly what I said, yes. Um, I, I remember, I think where I was getting confused, we paid more for the property than we originally thought we would pay, but we ended up realizing some efficiencies by co-locating the fire department, the fire station and cooperative extension. And, and I know I'm, I'm talking over Keith too. I'm sure he's got something to add.
Well, we, when we did the cooperative extension, you're right, we, we needed to add some money to that construction budget, but we haven't sold the existing facility yet. So there was earned, there was some monies moved in from the jail project, and I believe earned interest, I, I need to clarify that to be sure. But we moved almost a million dollars into that project to build it. And so this money that's left on the, to be reallocated is coming out of that million, but we still have the old building to sell.
Oh, okay. So, so it sounds like that, uh, the potential sale would come back to the same bucket. So that if, uh, if the interest, uh, unallocated earned interest is used for Costa building, uh, money can come back from potentially selling the old cooperative extension and help out with what's left over as a contingency for that whole bucket. Is that right?
That, that's correct. And that would come back to Mayor Commission to allocate.
Okay. And then I'll put my hand up when we get to, um, ideas of what could be in the building. Thank you.
It's, Patrick, I, I think I may have misunderstood you. Uh, you were asking about funding, right? Minute ago.
Yeah, that's great. I thought we were going to talk about the, yes, that's correct. I thought we were going to talk about the building design first.
Yes. But no, building, design and funding. So basically everything that was included within the presentation. And then we'll talk about potential occupants afterwards.
Okay, I do have a question of, uh, to, um, okay, so if I, if I'm reading this right, um, so we reduce the, the, from identified scope reduction as well as identified value engineering savings, we reduce, um, 1.59 million dollars to bring it down to 52, um, or 5,000, or 5,000, uh, 2, 290. Is that, first of all, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so, uh, ma- maybe you explain this, but what's the approved budget amendment for 1.399 and the proposed budget amendment for 1.743?
Well, at the schematic design level, when, when we had the estimate from the architect of the 3.8 million, even at that level, we knew we needed the 1.3 million, uh, but the, the already approved budget amendments. So Mayor Commission, at that point, we were reallocated a large portion of, of jail funds to, to multiple projects. And this was one of them that we moved. of them that we moved. That came from what was left for the jail project.
Okay. So I got, so, okay. So I got the proposed budget amendment. So what I'm trying to get my colleagues to understand, uh, or what I'm trying to get at is that removing the water harvest system, the windows, the, you know, um, the second and third floor interior bathrooms, I, I think are kind of important, especially we're going to have separate office spaces or dedicated office space for tenants. Um, I think the, the windows outside will be beneficial. And so my final question would be to, um, Mayor Gertz or to Blaine, is there any potential funding to, to possibly go extra into the 1.59 million dollars to go into, you know, implementing these, these cost reductions?
Uh, I'll note maybe one or two things and Blaine probably has some ideas too. I mean certainly, um, and you probably saw this in the note at the bottom of that identified scope reduction items page, uh, notes that these items will continue to be implemented in the construction drawings as well as, uh, additive alternatives and can be reinstated depending on final pricing and available funds. And so, you know, basically what that means is, hey, when you get into the project, you might find out that some of those, um, core component pieces don't cost quite as much. So maybe there is a little extra money. So that's one piece. You know, another thing that certainly comes to mind is that, you know, as we talk about American Rescue Plan Act dollars, um, you know, if, if you see some of the broad goal areas there as being aligned with some of the use of this building, that's a potential funding source too. Obviously we've not kind of gotten to that point with ARPA. Um, you know, we're going to have a, a stop along the way, uh, at the meeting week from tonight, but, uh, that, that's another that immediately comes to mind. Blaine, are there some others that hit you?
Yes, mayor, I agree with the two that you made. And then also just to connect what Commissioner Wright was asking about, certainly the sale of the cooperative extension could be an infusion here, uh, if you so chose.
And I did, if I could just take one, but it's not as when we take the rest, we said, uh, potentially take out the extra restrooms on the second and third floor. In the addition at the end of the building, there is proposed, um, two restrooms, two individual restrooms. It's a second set of individual restrooms that we were, were reducing out of the project in order to have some savings. So the two, um, new ones would be, meet the code requirements for these spaces as long as they're not assembly qualified as assembly spaces. You know, if they're office, uh, type spaces, uh, the two restrooms would be sufficient. If we do decide on a tenant that needs, uh, that assembly space, then we would probably have to include in their fit out, adding these two restrooms back.
And mayor, if I could add to that too, um, you know, there, as, as Keith pointed out, this does not include the fit out of the space with walls or furniture fixtures and equipment. You know, that could be an easily another million dollars depending on what escalation goes. So as we talk about extra funds coming back to maybe make whole some of the VE items here, uh, remember too, that there's that extra fit out depending on the types of tenants that you choose and what their needs are. So that's another financial need that we'll have to, to bolster here to, to totally finish the project.
Does that help Patrick?
Yes, thank you so much.
Good, good. All right. Uh, move to Jesse next and then Carol and I've got Melissa as well and Tim.
Thanks. Um, I got two design and two money questions. So my money question, number one is, um, those external walkways that are potentially going to be removed. I mean, could we be using the T-SLOSS project nine money for that? That's the downtown transportation improvements project. Some of that money be used for, for those instead of having an ACHM?
Well, I think that would, I would have to say that. I think that probably would be a stretch to call that a transportation related project. I mean, it is pedestrian movement, but I, I guess I'd really need to get clarity from attorney Drake or, or bond counsel to make sure that did meet the, the qualification for that project.
Okay. Well, I guess we can just let that hang there until maybe if that's a question that could be answered in the future. Um, so it might be a, a source of revenue if that's possible, especially if it's connecting to a park. Um,
Sure.
And then I, I just want to share, I saw the reference to using the money from the fire services and safety equipment. And given our recent, um, presentation on the trucks and then also some conversations I know many of us have been having about EMS needs and some EMS related equipment coming down the pike that we'll probably be looking for. I'm hesitant to dip into that bucket when I feel like we could use it for the fire department still. Um, so I guess that's more a thought than a question. Um, and then my, my two questions on structure, um, the rooftop patio, is that going to be open to all or is that tied to like a specific floor or a tenant on a floor or like a specific use in the building?
It, it is open. It would be technically open, has elevator and stairs that goes down to the lobby. So the use of it would be, I guess, dependent on who the tenant is and, and how, how mayor commission directs us to, or directs staff to put that into use. Uh, but it's, it's connected to all floors. Let me say it that way.
Okay. So it's not like only the third floor tenant has access or something and all floors.
It, it has, it has connectivity via the elevator and stairs from the lobby all the way to the second and third floors and, and a
Fantastic. And it's not, there isn't a tenant specific for that, right? That's intended to just kind of be like an open space. People can hang out and enjoy the view, maybe with coffee from downstairs or something. Yeah.
Yeah. We don't have tenants called out yet for any of the, any of the spaces.
Okay. Um, and then my last, uh, design question is just for the bathrooms. Um, could you all elaborate on if and how they'll be trans friendly? I know that we've been kind of keeping in the hopper for a potential future committee assignment, you know, our, our bathrooms policies, um, but from just a design standpoint, you know, we have an opportunity here to make sure that they're accessed by anyone regardless of gender instead of creating these kinds of segregated ones. So.
Well, the second and third floor restrooms are all individual stalls.
Okay. So that's just a matter of signage then. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, it would be, um, any unisex, any, it wouldn't be signed. I wouldn't sign it for any sex. It'd have a, um, individual stall lockable door, uh, you know.
And then on the first floor?
Uh, the first floor, I think is currently designed for, um, men's and women. So we would, we would need to look at, talk about it with the architect.
Okay. Well, I guess I'll just part with the thought that I think it's very important that we design them in a way that's trans friendly and, and there's multiple ways to do that, whether it's breaking them out to single occupancy or just kind of creating things that are open with, you know, walls that go floor to ceiling or whatever. But um, I feel like that would be an important thing for us to do. So, thanks.
Sure.
All right. Thanks y'all. Uh, move to Carol next.
Yeah, I just have, I just have finance questions, I think. Um, just lost 2011, um, over here, I'm, I'm looking at it on my screen here. It looks to me only structure yet to be built is the youth and community enrichment facility partnership. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So, um, it, it would be, I'm, I'm looking at this expenditure status thing and, and even if it's just maybe for us commissioner, like it'd be really helpful to have something like on this spreadsheet that says completed, like no more like the, like the Dudley Park improvements. Cause I know that there are some places like with the fire apparatus. Um, and I was just looking at this, the, uh, project description for, is that something that could be used for other things or not? Um, so that, that would just be helpful there. And I, I don't know what's going on, um, with that, um, youth development center. And I am concerned when I see the, uh, the increase in, uh, action prices on everything else that there won't be the money that's allocated there. It's just a little over two and a half million dollars, 2.7, uh, be enough to do very much. So that's just something I'm commenting on, um, right now. So, um, so it, I am correct, only major prob, like, uh, project left in 2011.
Correct. There are, there are still some sub projects that are underway, uh, within, within all of these. So in that expenditure sheet, you're looking at anything with a zero balance is a completed project. Um, other than the project that we put forth, the money, uh, that we're recommending to move, uh, those projects are completed. The fire, fire equipment, co-op, Dudley, the others that have money all have some version of a sub project still, still going on in some way.
Okay. Thank you.
And, and you're correct. The youth facility is the, the last structure and the, uh, land trust has, um, stated they have at least a million to add to that from donations and they're, they're still currently seeking grants and other opportunities. Uh, and we're in the site selection process for that project right now.
All right. Uh, let's see, Melissa?
I'm good. I, I don't have any questions. I believe other commissioners, uh, covered all my concerns.
Thanks. Go ahead, Tim.
Mayor, um, yeah, Keith, uh, my first question, can you tell me the, uh, the, the basement renovation, the 40% usable space, how much would the square footage be for that 40% usable space?
In the, in the basement?
Yeah. If it was going to be finished. Yeah.
Uh, just a second.
And while you're looking at that, I'll just, I'll go and, and, and move on to, um, for that, for that element to be cut, that, that one to me really should be prioritized because I mean, the whole purpose of what we're doing here is trying to make this building usable and maximize its space for community benefit. And that gives us, that hundred seven thousand dollars there gives us, well, it's not an entire extra floor. It gives us another floor to actually work with. That's an, that's potentially a whole nother tenant, a whole nother purpose, or at least an expanded purpose, uh, from like the first floor or such.
Well, one, one of the things Keith, if I'm not mistaken, um, the reason that, that was a palatable alternative is that the ceiling is pretty low in the basement. What, what's the height of the ceiling in the basement Keith?
It is low, but Daniel, you, you, you have that to memory?
Yeah. It, 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 it's almost a six feet. Uh, once you get to the northern section of that bill, it's, it's approximately six feet. And to answer your first question about how much occupiable space is down there, it's 1,800 square feet. Um, you know, and, and that's also kind of included the mechanic, some of the mechanical systems and electrical room that's down there as well.
So Daniel, I think at one point when we were discussing this, the, the, uh, space in the basement really lent itself more towards storage because of the low ceiling heights. I, I remember that. Is that what we got too?
That's correct.
It's not. It's very, I mean, it's, it's a low light, low ceiling occupy. I mean,
if you were to occupy about, occupy the space, it would be very low ceiling and very low light. Um, but you also have mechanical and electrical equipment to contend with as well.
Okay. Awesome. Well, I, I
It's more, it's more designed for, for storage as, as Blaine pointed out, just because it, it's not a, I wouldn't consider it a desirable space to occupy.
I hear you. Okay. Um, okay. I appreciate that. I guess it still would be if we're able to find it worthwhile, cause then maybe storage that would have to happen to happen somewhere else in the building could be happening down there, opening up space.
Correct.
Right. Okay. And then the last one was to say, for, for similar reasons was the plaza, uh, on the right-hand side. Um, you know, I think for pedestrian access, I think for beautification reasons and also just making this building, the entire thing, um, more usable. Um, I would like to see that, that portion also prioritized if we can. Um, and so I'm, I'm definitely interested in the, the, uh, some of the budgetary ideas that, uh, the mayor and the manager brought up. Um, I definitely would want to see that, see, see this prioritized, even if it was, you know, some kind of budget amendment, we had to pull some money from other sources, general fund, but of course, uh, uh, cooperative extension office, uh, what's going to happen with that property is, um, sounds like a good possibility too. Um, and okay. Everything else I can say for, uh, for the second part of discussion.
Thanks, Tim. Got, uh, Russell?
Thanks. Yeah. I, I think a lot of what I was going to bring up came up in the discussion about the basement. Um, you know, a six foot ceiling with no natural light. To me, I think that's something we can maybe leave on the cutting room floor, but I do like the, um, the plaza on the right. Um, sure wish we could build all the bathrooms we want downtown, but by golly, it's expensive to build things these days downtown, isn't it y'all? But look forward to the discussion.
Thanks, Russell. Uh, I, I see a couple of hands up on the sort of icons. Uh, Carol, did you have anything else about the, uh, either the construction or the, the funding? No, you're good? Tim, you good? All right. All right. Just, uh, kind of moving forward to conversation about how we might think about a tenancy concept. Um, of course, what I floated to the commission, uh, many weeks ago, you know, was the prospect of thinking, all right, well, what are the, um, high demand community needs and do some of those dovetail with, uh, kind of organizational needs for us as, as a local government? Uh, one of the prospects that I'd suggested is that we look at the third and fourth floor as an economic development hub. They could include not only, uh, the county's economic development department, but a real minority and underserved center as well. And then looking really at the, the one that's sort of closest to ground floor, I guess what staff describes as the first floor as, uh, being the outpost for the black history and culture center. That's been under discussion, uh, through the, uh, memory and justice team and others in the community. Um, and then, uh, prior to this discussion, I'd suggested that, uh, the basement level could be, uh, youth space, um, for some kind of arts or, or youth development activity. Um, you know, we, we may need to, uh, take a look at that. Keith, i- i- is it the case that the entirety of the basement level has a six foot ceiling? I know I'd been down there and it seemed like there was a component with a six foot ceiling, but then there was another component that might've had a seven and a half or eight foot ceiling or something like that. Is, is, is that correct?
The south part of that building does have a little bit higher ceiling, ceiling level. Um, I, I, right off the top of my head, I don't know that that number and, and I can share that. Um, and, and like, and just if you, if you give me a few minutes, I can find out what that number is. Um,
God, thanks, Daniel.
Open that up to discussion.
Perfect. I appreciate that. Uh, what, what I would love to do in, in a March approval is develop a tenancy concept. And obviously following concept, you know, we would have to go out to, um, you know, to refine that somewhat. Uh, and then of course ultimately put out a call for proposals, uh, for tenancy if there is going to be a non-ACC element of that. Um, but just, uh, would, would love some feedback, some thoughts. Um, and start with Jesse.
Thanks, mayor. Um, got, got two thoughts. Uh, the first is on the ground floor. I, I do very much think it's a, a, a great idea for us to have the black history center there. And, um, and then for one of the two upper floors, I'd like us to focus on youth serving organizations there, especially those whose programming can be tied to violence prevention or diversion from courts, youth detention centers, jails, things like that. Um, something akin to the front porch, which Commissioner Myers and I got to visit alongside some of our local judges and the district attorney and, and others, neighborhood leaders and stuff in the community. That's a project in Savannah that, if I could broadly summarize right now, it's a, it's a space where a lot of different entities are housed. Um, they've only got a couple of people on staff as the front porch and then people from other community organizations or like departments of the courts and the district attorney and stuff, um, go there, you know, for one or more days a week. And so it kind of functions as a space that doesn't feel like a, a court, um, and, and is, I think just much more accessible. And they've had a lot of success. So without going on about that program too much, uh, unless it's necessary in this conversation, I'll just say, I, I think there's a lot that we can borrow from that. And this is a real opportunity for us to cede that here, even if it doesn't stay there. And, and those functioning as office spaces would easily transition into something else if the Athens equivalent of a front porch wanted to migrate or grow. Um, and with both of these, I, I would love to see us, if not in this agenda item, then perhaps like in the month after, uh, make some kind of formal commitment by resolution that these spaces would be dedicated for those purposes. Uh, because I think that's going to be really essential for those organizations, the justice and memory committee for the black history center, if we do that. And then, um, perhaps the district attorney for the, um, front porch equivalent to do fundraising so that, you know, when this building is actually ready to be, to be moved into, there's money to actually outfit those spaces. And the district attorney has indicated to me that she's prepared to, to kind of spearhead a lot of that fundraising if we do want to see a program like that happen here. Um, but like a key prerequisite for that to go anywhere is for her to have some kind of commitment to a space from us. So that's what I got.
Right. Uh, Patrick?
Thank you. Um, just got a question about ACC facilities rent.
Thank you. Um, just got a question about ACC facilities rent. If we like a nonprofit decide to, we decide if nonprofit, um, want to utilize that space, um, would that be subjected? And to the African-American museums, um, I would like for us to also think about the Native Americans who've been here as well, especially like the Tennessee Native Americans. Oh, please, um, my mind is drawn by, but also just, just to say like, um, maybe a more expansive Athens history with a focus on African-Americans and Native Americans who, um, Native American museum, um, okay, but yeah, but yeah, uh, first, ACC facilities rent, would that be subjected?
But my anticipation is that, given that we've developed a, a kind of blanket policy for outside entity use of ACC space, we would continue to use that policy in space here that any outside entities would take advantage of.
Thank you.
Uh, let's see, I've got, uh, Tim and Mariah. And Allison.
Thanks. Thank you. Um, and so definitely, uh, agree with everyone here, uh, with, with the, the Black History and, and indigenous peoples, however we're gonna format that, I think that's a great point, Commissioner Davenport. I will say that I, I would rather that not be on the first floor, mainly because the first floor has more limited space. Uh, the second floor and the third floor is a little more open space that I could see working better for a museum kind of concept, um, has more room there. Um, the other, uh, I, I definitely, uh, agree with the, the incubator space, especially if we can have for, for nonprofits, um, and small business development. Um, I would, I would rather, I would like to see that limited to one floor though, so that we can expand, uh, more purposes with the third. And for the last thing I, I would love to see would be, um, and I'm wondering if the incubator space might be better for the first floor, just because it's more broken up on that level. I, I don't know, that's just a thought that I had. Um, and then the last thing, uh, that I would love to see, it would be, we've talked a lot of times, uh, there's not a lot of stuff downtown for children and families. Now, a lot of cities our size have children's museums, which I know that there was talk about that for a while, as people, there was a push to try to get something like that. Um, I was at one that was pretty fantastic in Lakeland and a historic building much like this, and they actually also had like a weird old, like, kind of smaller basement, and since it's mostly like all kids running around, they had a floor plus the basement underneath, uh, that they turned into like a interactive play area and stuff for kids. So I'm wondering if that could somehow be worked in here and still be able to use it for the basement somewhat. And the last thing, really, in a small way, um, doesn't have to be anything big, but I think it'd be great to have a coffee shop here or a small cafe, something that can make this more of a, um, a, a, you know, a coming-together area, a place where people hang out for a while. You go to the museum, you get coffee, you get a snack, you hang out in the hot corner park, or on the little new plaza, if the plaza gets built. So I think that would be, uh, and it could be like a small Jiggery Joes or something, you know, just in the lobby, it's not gonna be big, but I think it'd be a smart thing to have incorporated. That's all I got.
Thanks, Tim. Mariah?
Um, yeah, I just wanted to offer one contrasting perspective with the idea of having some youth development facilities located here. Can you, can you not hear me? It's, um, Allison making a.
You, you're a little light, but I hear you. Now you're muted.
About now?
Good, good.
Okay. Sorry about that. Um, so offer one contrasting perspective and one thing I don't think I've heard yet. So, um, we've heard, so on the idea of having youth development, um, facilities here of some kind, we have heard from, um, residents of, um, Rolling Bridge about wanting a community center there, Clark Gardens, folks in L E B who have really desired that, and I think it's really important to meet folks where they're at with a lot of things like that. Uh, so certain segments of the community do feel like we are overly focused on downtown at times, and while I do agree that there's measures we could take to make it more family-centric, I, I think, you know, refocusing on the fact that there are, I guess, psychological barriers for some folks for coming downtown at all, and how we can, if we are looking at places to invest in that kind of thing, looking at how we can, you know, make investments in communities where, um, where folks already are, for example. And then the other idea, um, that I had, I'm glad that Tim brought up a coffee shop or something that, that I do think it'd be really nice to have, some sort of commercial component to help bring people into the space. Um, but I would like to, for us to think about how we could support s- some, some sort of enterprise in being, um, cooperatively run, um, just because there's numerous benefits to, um, work around co- co-ops and pay, um, um, longevity of the business and things like that. And so I think this is really a unique, unique opportunity to see how we could, um, help support a business like that in entering the space. That's all.
Thanks, Mariah. Allison?
Um, yeah, I, I appreciate this discussion and, um, the, once the shell is made, um, it's gonna be great to, um, do the RFP process. Are we, we, that, we definitely have to do it that way, right? We would do an RFP process to sort of see who would be interested?
Yes, so, but my notion, and Blaine can probably chime in a little bit more on the technical details of this, is to say, we've got X amount of space that we are intending for Y purpose, you know, come forth pleased to, um, to fulfill those needs, and, and then we would accept those kind of with a review criteria. Uh, Blaine, what, what, what more would you add to that?
Yes, I, I, I think, you know, when we want to be transparent and equitable, if there's, you know, some of the, um, some of the uses you've talked about may have more than one entity interested in it. We just want to see what the interests are out there and, and let you all decide who those ultimate tenants would be. And, and, and I'd also, I'm sorry, Commissioner Wright, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but I wanted to say, and, and I'm also hearing a mix of not only the, the types of tenants, but potential programs that may or may not have, uh, you know, the government's financial participation. So, uh, I think that's important to flesh out as we go through all this, what that looks like, because that could be part of the RFP too. Not unlike the, the youth development project we referenced about 2011, you know, you were trying to achieve certain ends, and so you project that in the RFP, and then you see what folks are able to bring to the table to make it an even better, you know, a, a, a bigger benefit to the community. Thank you.
Yeah, that's great. And because I think that when we do the RFP pro- process, that's when we're gonna learn what we, we're not thinking about. I mean, like, I think we could also consider a pride center or pride headquarters, which also is doing youth, um, outreach right now that is a current event, um, that, that could work with other groups for a space. Um, but again, casting the net that we get with the RFP process, the other idea that I've always thought would be great for here as far as commercial is, uh, ice cream, because that's what started this building. I mean, imagine if the little ice cream dude did, answered the request for proposals to have a shop there. So, um, I'm glad that we're gonna open it up and make sure, uh, that, uh, that people that can bring something to this building and get it active again, um, and a center for, um, a variety of things. Um, I like the way the process is going, um, for the incubators or nonprofits or, uh, the other ideas that have been mentioned. So, um, I look forward to this moving, moving ahead.
Thanks, Allison. Carol?
Yeah, um, I want to follow up on a couple of things that have been mentioned. Um, I knew I can't win, but there was some discussion I had with someone downtown, maybe it was with the Downtown Authority, Lynn, uh, who were talking about that old, uh, bus stop space right there, um, using that to have some sort of small coffee interest. So if that is going forward, that would seem to, uh, serve the same purpose we're talking about, talking about coffee shops for it, um, in reusing that space where the bus stop used to be. Um, I, I'd like to echo, um, Jesse's interest in working, uh, to establish something like the front porch where, uh, he and I, uh, they and I visited, um, down in Savannah, uh, which is a risk reduction program to divert youth who would otherwise be referred to the court for delinquency, dependency, until services and works with pulling all together, facilitating lots of different groups being in one place, um, that's a really non, you know, judicial-like place for people to go to get, um, the kind of help they needed to get out of that, uh, court system and so. Um, and there's some great examples of this, and I would really like to support, um, our district attorney doing some of these really innovative programs, um, that are working to reevaluate how we do justice. Um, and I'm gonna share a couple of links on that with other people so they can see what it, it is. And of course, a hundred percent behind the African-American, uh, museum, um, having it include something about the local people, the Creek Indians and such would be, you know, wonderful going back in that part of our history. Um, and I look forward to doing that. And on that matter, I also wonder if we are going to be thinking about that as we go forward with our budgeting for next year to, um, budget something for helping with the development of that project, of that, um, uh, museum as well, because it's an awful big, um, task to take on. Anyway, those are my thoughts right now.
Thanks, Carol. Uh, just before circling back, uh, for another round of input, a couple of notes. Um, we, we do have, I believe, a, intergovernmental agreement with the Downtown Development Authority regarding that old bus, bus kiosk area. Um, I, I don't know where they are in development of that, but I am meeting with B D A later this week, so I could find out a, a little bit more about that, uh, for everybody. Uh, and, and I'll note, I, I've visited the front porch in Savannah. I think it's a great facility, and I love that sort of multifunctional, uh, support apparatus. Uh, from a, from an accessibility standpoint, I, I, I would say that there may be other kinds of spaces in the community that may be more accessible to teens, just given parking concerns and things like that. When you're thinking about the, the downtown grid versus the dynamic where the front porch actually is a, it's an old house, it's front, it's got a front porch, it's got a, uh, parking lot, uh, sort of out back where anybody can kind of pull up and, and access. Uh, I do know that the school district has unprogrammed area in their new campus on Prince Avenue. That may be the kind of thing that just might work for, for kids and families, if they're kind of wanting to roll up and access an array of resources i- in the way that a, a downtown core block just might not work quite as well. So I just want to plant that seed, um, you know, definitely not pouring any cold water on front porch as a concept, but just thinking about accessibility, um, to, to community members who would need to avail themselves of those kind of resources. Um, and, and then Tim, you made the note about, you know, maybe the upstairs for the, um, uh, museum space. You know, one of the benefits of, of a first floor, as I've thought of it, is just that direct public use, sort of more open public space versus something that might be a slightly more private office space, where you just have to go up more steps and get an elevator and that kind of thing. So it's just that sort of, you know, front window sort of facade. Um, what, what I would also anticipate as a prospect, and, you know, we just don't know where this is going, is that at some point, um, a, a, a Black Cultural and History Center may want to eventually even leapfrog to a larger space, where rather than just a few thousand square feet, they've got, you know, the, the entirety of a, a, a building at some point. So that, that certainly is something that may be true some years from now. Um, so anyhow, I got a couple of folks who, uh, wanted to circle back with some more thoughts, so, um, I'll hit Patrick again and then Jesse.
Um, my colleagues, thank you, Mayor. My colleagues had answered the question I was gonna ask.
Cool. Uh, thanks, Patrick. Jesse?
Thanks. Um, yeah, I really appreciate your points about the, the front porch, um, you know, maybe ideally being housed in a different space. So I'm, I'm not attached to this being the space. Um, however, my thinking going here was more that this is a space that we are about to have soon and likely sooner than others. Um, but, you know, if this is an, if this is a, a project we can pursue as a priority without needing this space to be the impetus for that, then that, you know, has me really excited regardless. And if, whether it's on that C C S D campus or other properties we may have, like Taylor Grady or something, um, I just, I do think it's important for us to play our part in helping other, you know, members of our community who really want to drive this forward. And I know that District Attorney Gonzalez really does want to drive this forward, and I think, uh, her vision, as I've understood it, I'm not gonna try to speak for her, but as I've understood it, um, aligns very much with the vision of the front porch in Savannah, and what's happening there aligns very strongly with a lot of what we've been talking about in our strategic plan, which we're gonna get to here soon. Um, regarding RF, oh, and, and I also wanted to, you know, speaking of Commissioner Parker's point about meeting people where they're at, I think that's a point really well taken. Uh, and I also think that, at the same time, you know, we have a space already available downtown that's about to open, that we've got kind of funding lined up for and everything, that can serve a function soon. While a lot of these other places we're talking about, it's important for us to invest in, I agree, but how to, how to get something happening there is a more complicated, you know, probably longer-term process. So I think there is a, a value in the immediate for some youth development organizations using the space, um, especially because as I understand it, there are some organizations in town that kind of just need a place to be headquartered. And so, you know, when it comes to just having, having space to sort of operate from as a small organization, this could be really helpful. Um, my question, uh, is about RFPs. So is an RFP necessary if the museum idea or like the cultural center that might, it's, I think, gonna be sort of a community space, as I've understood it to be described? If that's happening through our Justice and Memory Committee, does that need to go to RFP or can that just kind of happen without an RFP as part of sort of a directive through that?
Just as a sort of, uh, uh, like I say, engagement note, um, the Justice and Memory Team has sort of been a cheerleader, but it's not sort of lead actor in terms of, um, development of space. Um, my understanding is that there's a coalition, and I've met with a variety of folks, who's sort of assembling that includes folks from Assala, um, you know, includes some members of the Justice and Memory Group, and, and also includes the sort of newly-installed African-American Heritage position over Historic Athens. So I thi- I think there's a cluster that's assembling, um, but, but it's not that Justice and Memory is, is kind of the, um, charge leader, so to speak.
Okay, and so if that cluster were to be worked with, then that would have to go through an RFP process where they'd apply, and we'd see if that cluster's application was the, the standout one among whatever else we get? Is that what I'm hearing from you?
Blaine, provide a little perspective if you can.
Sure, sure. So, um, and I'd have to, I'd, I'd like to talk with Judd a little bit. I'm not sure it's an actual procurement, um, and it would, but it may depend. So it, all right, let's say for instance that, um, you want to use some S P L O S funds to build out the inside of the, uh, building, okay? Just going off the cuff, I think building walls and separations, that, that would be eligible for the project. Um, you know, building out exhibit space for a museum may not be. So you may then want to use ARPA funds. And if we use ARPA funds, that may beg some questions about how we choose how to spend those. I mean, it's our space, uh, so if it remains our space. I think it depends, Commissioner Hul. I'd love to think about that a little bit more. Uh, it, it, it may not be a procurement, uh, but certainly you would need to enter into an agreement, if it's a lease agreement or what have you, um, you know, for the space, and you would want them to have certain things like insurance and whatnot to lease the space. Uh, so it, if you'd allow us to investigate that a little bit more, I'd appreciate that.
Okay, fantastic. And then I guess there's the same kind of ditto question. If we're good, if we're to explore something like the front porch, whether it's here or in another property that's owned by the Unified Government, does that require any kind of RFP process? Or if it's being spearheaded by another, you know, government office, such as the district attorney, does that sort of preclude us having to go through an RFP?
If you were to put, and I'm not as familiar, you, you've told me a little bit about the front porch, so it may be sponsored, but I would, is there a nonprofit involved that would be in, in happening that space?
I mean, in Savannah, they have a nonprofit. The nonprofit is the front porch. Um, so I imagine that's a direction this would eventually go, but I'm wondering, you know, if we don't go through the same order of operations they did to try to get to a similar point, if the point we start at is some kind of, you know, agreement, an M O U or an I G A, you know, um, among entities that are ready to kind of get it going, and from there, perhaps another entity is formed.
Well, I guess it all would depend on the nature of, of who's coming in, uh, the programs they're providing, how it's being funded, what our level of participation is as far as funding. You know, we'd have to look at all those variables and tell you whether you needed a selection process or you could just go straight to go.
Okay.
That's fair.
Carol?
Yeah, I'm, and I, I may have spaced out a little bit on, I was thinking of something else, but, um, and that's a dis- but, and that's a discussion in terms of the African American Museum and our funding of that or that incorporation into the county that I'd like to have a better understanding of at another time. I mean, we do have places like the Linden House, which is a museum of such, as such, which is a Athens Clark County entity, right? So is the African American Museum going to be something that's completely on its own or part of the ACC government? And like I said, maybe this was covered, maybe it isn't, but I'd like to have a better understanding of that somewhere down the line.
Thanks, Carol. All right. Thanks for the ideas, everyone. Super helpful. Appreciate everybody's thoughts gathering around this. I anticipate we'll see an agenda item on the first of March, so a few more weeks for thought and discussion. But we are going to move on now to our final item of the evening. I'll let Blaine introduce the conversation about our organizational strategic plan.
And just for the benefit of the folks working or watching online, you know, you all have put a great deal of time and effort into meeting in multiple retreats through late fall and early winter on a strategic plan for the government. And I want to recognize our Chief Data Officer, Joseph D'Angelo, and his staff for helping to spearhead that, and for Assistant Manager Josh Edwards and Assistant Two Sarah George for helping to shepherd that as well. And so we are nearing the end with definition here. And Joseph's going to walk through for both your benefit and the public where we are now, a little bit about the process and the next steps here, you know, coming forward with an agenda item to help go ahead and ratify this and allow us to make it into the budget as much as we can. So with that, I'll turn it over to Chief Data Officer Joseph D'Angelo.
Thank you, sir. And if you could give me a thumbs up if I'm sharing the correct screen, that would be very helpful. All right. Good evening, everybody. I'm excited to come before you tonight with some happy and non contentious news. Together, we have come up with the framework for what we think will be a highly successful and useful strategic plan. We'll unveil the goals, strategies, and initiatives therein tonight, and ask you all to deliberate and decide on whether it adequately reflects your priorities for fiscal years 2023 through 2025. It is an ambitious plan. There are six broad goal areas with a total of 31 associated strategies. Under those strategies, 97 separate initiatives we'll prioritize and tackle over the next few years together. In our short discussion this evening, we'll walk through how the plan came about, who was involved, and the activities we walked through to get to here at this point. Of course, this body knows what it took just as well as anyone else, as you were central to the process. But it will be helpful for those following along at home, last I checked, it was nine people, to hear about the care that was taken to get their needs and desires as residents down on paper. As a lot of us know, although we are calling this effort our first organizational strategic plan, this is not the whole of the story. It's a bit of a misnomer. Like all communities in Georgia, our planning department produces a long range document called the Comprehensive Plan, or COMP Plan for short. Last time around, great care was taken to bring along the ideas of the community through a series of engagements over many months. In doing so, nearly 2,000 artifacts of public feedback were collected and considered. An offshoot of the COMP Plan was Envision Athens, which identified more than 100 community priorities over more than a dozen areas of concentration. Both of those documents were foundational to this effort at the outset. And additionally, ACC Gov collects resident input every other year through the National Community Survey, and the Athens Wellbeing Project collects snapshots of our community status every other year as well. Throughout every year, we, as a government, gather snippets of residents' voices through many outreach and engagement events, polls, surveys, and other user groups. All of these data points were literally laid out on the table earlier in the summer of 2021, and the goal was to ensure that we, as a government, were doing what we could to pull together, united, in a set of agreed upon priorities. In August, this body gave us the green light to start synthesizing all of that information into a community-wide strategic plan. We wasted little time. We agreed on a minimum of three planning sessions. Also around that time, we began to build our internal team of data owners and staff members who are most familiar with operations in their departments. We formed five workgroups around the different areas of concentration comprised of our coworkers from 23 departments and offices. We worked with each group, along with the mayor and commission, and the department directors and officers, and our fantastic neighborhood leaders to get down on sticky notes their perceived organizational strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. We took all of this information, and we began breaking the data into broad themes. We started out with nine categories, but we knew we had more work to do to ensure that the plan was actionable, timely, and achievable. We then brought our findings back to you, the mayor and commission, for further refinement, eventually getting down to six broad goal areas. Underneath these goals, you all told us what actions you wanted to take under each goal in order to make for a successful attainment of each of these goals. We worked together to make sure we were capturing goals and strategies in your voice and reflective of your priorities. Once we got all that right, we asked staff members, who are professionally charged with knowing something about each of the strategy areas, to work with their cohorts to draft the initiative that they thought they would need to execute in order to support the strategies laid out by the mayor and commission. They came up initially with 188 initiatives for three years. That was a lot. If there was any controversy among internal staff, it was under the heading of Good Neighbors. This goal deals directly with the standards to which ACC Gov will need to hold itself to make for a safe, supportive, and healthy community for its residents. The second goal area was, was a little bit easier to define, but in a similar vein, we know that our community partnerships, while strong and solid, may also experience a few gaps. We know for sure that we could be doing more to strengthen our alliance of communication and to make more people aware of the resources they might access to make their lives a little bit more comfortable. That's where they identify and close gaps in partnership with the community goal area came from. In the area of organizational improvement, there, we identified a number of strong needs. We know that, as is the case with a lot of large organizations, both public and private, we need to be self-aware, turning our critical gaze inward and getting better at what we do. We received many indications that we ought to become a more agile organization and an organization that does what it can to make sure that we attract and keep the best workers that we can. Another key finding was that we knew we were going to have as a key stone priority of ours for the next three years was the near area of housing. Most communities are struggling to help keep their residents adequately housed, and Athens Clark County, as you know, is no exception. At the same time, there are somewhat limited actions the government can realistically take in order to make this priority a reality, especially in the course of three years. We had to take care to prioritize the most important things we'd be able to tackle in that timeframe. Another strong theme that came out of our many engagements was transportation access, equity, and vehicle safety. We've heard a lot about closing connectivity gaps both within and outside the county, and about making sure our transportation network serves the areas of the county where people want to travel to or from, and this goal area encompasses those ideas. Finally, there's a pretty important area where strategy can make all the difference, and that's making sure that we're doing what's necessary to keep up with the things we choose to build and the natural areas of our community in need of protection and preservation. Hence, the goal area of built a natural infrastructure. Once we had the goal and strategy language nailed down, along with the mayor and commission, we turned back to the everyday experts in our departments for their ideas on how to get everything done. Our first consideration was asking whether, if the initiative is successfully implemented, what will be the impact of achieving the key strategy? Which of these initiatives would have the most impact, give us the most bang for our bucks, so to speak? Next, we asked for the probability that the initiative will be successfully implemented if we decide to undertake it, given the timeframe. And finally, we wanted to ensure that we continued to be good financial stewards in executing these initiatives, and we wanted to know how likely it was that the initiative would be completed within that strategic plan timeframe, if sufficiently resourced. So what's next? We're ready to get going. We hope you will give your sincere consideration to this plan. As you know, it was truly a team effort. Further, we hope that this consideration will result in your adoption of this plan. When you do, we will build the elements thereof into our performance management software, ClearPoint, for real time tracking of accomplishments relating to the six goal areas. We'll also build in background information and the milestones that will comprise the work breakdown structure leading to the completion of the plan. We'll measure how we're doing using public facing performance indicators that will allow us to compare our progress, both to our own baseline measurements and to other similar communities as appropriate. And then sometime during calendar year 2024, we'll be back at your door. We'll begin the process once again with an eye toward the completion of a new plan. The primary purpose of that plan will be to use it to align agency priorities and organizational priorities with budget priorities. We really hope to start early enough to fully inform the budget process with the next plan. We also hope to start early enough to build in robust public engagement in support of the new plan. To summarize, we as an organization, well on our way toward a more thoughtful, methodical, and more transparent approach towards short and midterm prioritization and budgeting. I thank you very sincerely for your patience and your support of this plan, and I urge you just give it as much study as you think is necessary. And I will now stop sharing this screen.
Thanks, Joseph. Appreciate the presentation. I want to give great praise and thanks to everybody who's on this call, and really not just the manager's office, but everybody on staff who's contributed, contemplated, asking the manager's office to read the eight pages of the draft strategic plan, goals, strategies, and initiatives, but thought better of it. So just want to turn to some commissioners for input. So start with Commissioner Parker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And yeah, also great thanks to staff for all the work that they have put in on it, and other partners in the community, neighborhood leaders as well. And also thank you for not going through the whole strategic plan. We have it available to us. It looks like it's on the presentation that's online, if anyone watching wants to go read all of it. You know, if you were at the retreats, you've kind of gotten a preview of all this. It looks very similar. I would love, I know that you all took super detailed notes of the retreats, which I also appreciated a great deal. And if there were any notes from other convenings that we weren't at that kind of informed the final shape of the strategic plans here, that would be helpful. For example, if there's an initiative here, I, you know, I, this is just hypothetical, that I like really wanted, but I didn't see in there. Understanding why staff didn't see that it's feasible might, you know, help allay those concerns and move forward more smoothly. So I guess my question for now, I think that all that could be addressed via email, like I'll just reach out with specific questions and, you know, discuss our conclusions from that investigation, like at the voting meeting, we don't have to do that now. But my question would be, like, is that, is, are those notes available for us to like, or, you know, another opportunity for us to dialogue more with staff to kind of understand the recommendations, something like that available?
Yeah, that's a good point, Commissioner Parker. We did take great pains to retain everybody's information, and really, when we got down to kind of slicing and dicing, we kind of took a snapshot day by day by day with fractures enabled in the Word document, once we got to the Word document. And so those raw files are all available. We can just drop them into a SharePoint file if that's convenient for you. And then you can, it'll be messy, and you'll see how some of the language has evolved over time, and some things got combined. And a few things that were already in process or that we knew we would be tackling at some point in fiscal year 2022, those were not reflected in the plan, but they were retained so that we can kind of go back and put meat on the bones later on and really flesh out the entirety of the plan. So yes, we can, we can give you those documents.
That sounds fantastic. Yeah, getting more insight from, you know, the various partners that have been engaged in this work with us for their rationale for the things that they put forward, the, as you referenced in the presentation, the feasibility, the likelihood of success, et cetera, other barriers, that would be super helpful. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks for the messiness, Joseph. They don't call this sausage making for nothing. Turn it over to Tim.
Thank you, Mayor. And, I mean, I know Joseph's not going to say it, but I mean, our, the notes from like our group, me, the mayor, Carol, they had pretty good notes. Remember that map? It was beautiful. We did a good job. You don't have to say, I know you have favorites, you don't have to say that. But no, I really just want to come out and say, like, a huge thanks. This was our Herculean task, and I was really impressed with all the work that, especially Josh and Joseph and Sarah and Paige all put into this, and definitely neighborhood leaders and all the staff and department heads that also gave input. And of course, my colleagues who, the ones of us who like sat through this long process, but I think it was very fruitful. And I just know it was, it was a huge amount of work, and I think it's going to pay off dividends for our county and our community. So I just wanted to definitely express my thanks to y'all.
Thank you. It's very kind.
Thanks, Tim. Patrick, you had your hand up for a second. Did you have anything?
Yeah, um, no, I'm sorry. I accidentally raised my hand. I apologize.
No worries. Carol?
Yeah, I mean, echoing Tim, and just sort of publicly, I see like Josh in there, and I'm thinking of us playing those breakout games over at Sandy Creek Park, and many, many hours that we as a commission put into this, and then you put all so many more and so many different groups and staff and the neighborhood leaders. I think it's a real important process to sort of think through all of this together. So I'm very appreciative of it, and the whole process very sort of good for my thinking and focusing in on what we're doing as a community. I do have a very concrete, so a couple of concrete questions to ask so that I understand how this works. I mean, I understand strategies and initiatives, but in terms of the initiatives, like the level of specificity and where things are, this is the organizational part of me in here. It's like, these are all, these are the things we're doing, and if it's not on this list, we're not doing them. So that, that's what I just kind of want to understand, and I have a couple of examples, and you could tell me where they fit in. Clearly, like in the Good Neighbors A, the work on the African American Museum is, we were just talking about that, and that's something else. Is that something that has to be at this, or is it not get incorporated into these goals and strategies? I'm just going to list off a couple of them that I saw, like Eastside Library Development and the Transformation of the Place. We have some stuff in here about the, to do, the human, the human R, the HRC, the Human Relations Committee, but I don't think we're supporting Public Safety Committee that we just put together. So if there, and I know I was really big on like maternity, fraternity, where are those, should I be concerned about like getting them on the list? That's basically what I want to know. Or are they incorporated into other places? Into other initiatives in here?
Yeah, so some of those named projects, most of what you've ticked off will be reflected in the way of milestones, some milestones. Anything with that degree of granularity, it kind of, kind of goes beyond the initiative and becomes something, particularly in the, in the HR related ones, the organizational improvement ones, there are some that are listed A through F that with, with, with specificity. All of that information has been retained, and to Commissioner Parker's point, you know, it would probably be a good idea to show you those original documents once again. But, but anything that you all mentioned in your notes that was, that was very specific, like specific beyond the level of initiative, that, that has been retained and it will be incorporated, as I mentioned, into the milestones and some milestones, and kind of work breakdown structures that we'll use to make sure that we're accomplishing initiatives.
And one thing I would add to that, I'm sorry.
Okay. Go. You can add, Josh, maybe you'll answer my question.
Yeah, Commissioner Myers, one thing I would add is, you know, you brought up the Public Safety Oversight Board. We do have an initiative that's more broad that's supporting BACs, right? So the work we're doing in supporting all BACs, that would be inclusive of that board as well. So I think some of your examples were very specific, and you can't list everything, and and this is meant to be the priorities. But obviously, there's other work that will be done. The other thing I would add to that is that some of our initiatives are go and study things and better understand and explore the challenge of that thing. So obviously, we're going to come back at some point and tell you what we've learned, and that's going to lead to a potential initiative that's around implementation. So this is meant to be a flex- So this is meant to be a flexible plan, but there needs to be check-ins with y'all. So as we bring back at other follow-up retreats, how it's going, what we're learning, what we're implementing, there will be further discussions and there will be, you know, at the, before we enter into a budget process, y'all might tell us, hey, there are some big things that are missing. We need to reevaluate and talk about those and better understand it. But it's, it's meant to, to help us see into the future. It's not going to be perfect, but it, y'all did a great job and you had fun doing it. So that's important.
Yeah. That is, and again, this is a, I'm just trying to get down this document. I'm looking at it carefully so that like there's some like in D, for example, one, two, and three actually are pretty specific and granular about College Square and outdoor kitchens and where four is develop a culture of placemaking, which is a broader goal. And, and that's where I'm like, I, I want to, you know, should I be, okay, it has caught college square here. Should I be concerned about putting something on for the, you know, east side? I mean, that's, that's, and it's not, it's, I just want it all to balance out. There's a logical side of me that wants to balance it all out as well. So that's just a comment.
Thanks, Carol. Urbina?
Yes, I want to thank staff also for doing an amazing job collecting all of these thoughts and being able to compile them. The other thing I appreciated about this process, the transparency on more than one of the sessions, we had people from the community come and watch us go through this process. So I think that that has been one of my goals or hopes that people will become more involved. And so I guess my question is, and it might be the same as, as Commissioner Myers, is there going to be a way, is there going to be, and I'm sure, I guess I need you to confirm, those milestones will allow us to plug in something that we may have overlooked or area that might have gotten by us and calculations that we may have not touched, such as youth and elderly. There will be check-in milestones that we can incorporate things as we go along. Is that correct? This is not a, a concrete document. It's organic.
Yes, ma'am, very much so. Over the course of three years, obviously there are going to be some adjustments to be made, but I'll just point to, for instance, again, under the, under the goal area of Good Neighbors, there's an initiative to extend ACC GOV's reach into the community. Now, obviously there are going to have to be a number of milestones built in under, under that heading to, to make that, whatever we define as a group accomplished, right? How, how are we going to, how else are we going to be checking off? We don't have some, some very clearly defined and very granular things that we're checking off to get to a point where we all agree that we're extending ACC GOV's reach in the community. So there are going, you know, kind of back to Commissioner Myers' point, there are some that are a little broader than others, but we really try to make an effort to make the goal strategies and initiatives documented, which is not synonymous with the strategic plan proper. You know, it's, it's, again, kind of the bones, make that digestible for y'all and for the public, but we do have streams of information to accompany the final document.
One more thing, Joseph, just for listening folk, this is a process of development. Is this, and for me also, do we do this every year or do we come up with something and make these adjustments as we go? And I know we've mentioned other, I guess, policies or research, like envisioned assets. So just for the listening audience, this is not stagnant whatsoever. We can expect something like this every year. Is that, is that right, Tim?
Yes, ma'am. This, you can expect this to be the standard going forward.
And if I could qualify that too, so we have done this every year. And if you remember last year, we had sixty-something initiatives. And then during the year, there was a lot more kind of added and, and in the, you know, the midst of the pandemic and, you know, our workforce attrition and everybody, you know, it was just, it was a little chaotic to try and keep up with everything. So I think our staff judiciously said, well, let's try and plan, because we were hearing some, some commonality between years, which is a great thing, on important things to use. So we projected a three-year plan. Now, it's dynamic, Commissioner Thornton, you know, it can be revisited. And I just want to make sure that, that we're being accurate when we respond to you. So this coming year won't look exactly like this year because you were constructing the three-year plan. And then this, you know, right after you approved this or right after we get into the budget year, I think, and I spoke to the mayor about this, you, you've probably had five or six retreats on this topic and we would shoot for maybe quarterly at the most next year, three or four. I see the mayor going for three. You know, where we're reporting to you our progress on that initially, Josh, if you would take us through what we were, we talked about.
Right, so we want to have time to, as Joseph mentioned, put the plan into Clearpoint and begin working with our employees and goal teams to populate the information and plan how we're going to implement it. As both Joseph and Blaine shared, this is a three-year plan, so we're not going to be able to start every initiative on July 1. We see some initiatives as things we're going to focus on in the first fiscal year and the second, and we're going to have to prioritize that work with our employees to make sure we're able to do this work with, with quality and focus. And so that's why this really is a three-year plan. This work will take us three years to accomplish the initiatives. But as we go through the plan, especially this first year, we want to check in with y'all and let you know how it's going. And so there won't be a huge development process, but what Joseph and his team will be doing is working with our employees to populate the system and then bringing our reports to y'all at your retreats to say, here's what we're working on, here's how it's going, here's the tweaks we're making, here's how we're going to improve, here's the questions we have for y'all, the things we need to better understand. Go to the work, come back in the next quarter and have that same conversation. So we're iterating through the first year. As we enter in the, the, the end of that first year, that will be a good opportunity to have a check-in with y'all to see, how do you think it's going? Are there things that we, we could do differently that would make this more useful for y'all and the community? And so that's what we're really trying to do is iterate through the first year. After, oh yeah, sorry, Mayor. Go ahead.
Well, just a very brief note about kind of how this dovetails with our calendar's body, you know, it's my intent in the next four to six weeks to be able to say, let's look at the rest of the current fiscal year and fiscal 23 and have a calendar roadmap that says, hey, you know, we're going to meet in, you know, roughly August, October, and January and pin those dates down well in advance. I mean, I think it's no secret that, you know, as Blaine kind of alluded to a couple of minutes ago, you know, the last couple of years have just been choppy on the calendar, given a lot of dynamics, a pandemic. And so I want to be able to signal to everybody, hey, you know, we're going to meet October 3 and these are the general tasks that we're going to do on that date on October 15th and here's what's going to happen there, January 18th, and here's what's going to happen there. Sorry, Josh, I didn't mean to step on you, but go ahead.
The only other thing to share is that, that third year of the plan, we're going to be working as staff with y'all's help and the community's help to update the entire plan. So that's when you'll see the most changes, is we will have a full year to do that and then at the end of that third year, when this plan is over, y'all will have the opportunity to adopt a new plan that's updated and representative of your, your vision for the community. So that's where the heavy lifting will, heavy lifting will happen is year three.
Thank, thank you, everyone. I appreciate that.
Perfect. All right, let's see, Jesse?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, the, the whole exchange to date has covered a lot of what I was asking about. So I think I kind of want to just make sure I'm understanding this correctly. So we're going to have our, our quarterly or three times a year kind of check-ins at the staff organized retreats and that'll be our opportunity to kind of revisit this, update progress on where we're at. Maybe make some tweaks. And so that's, I guess my first question is, like modifications to this that might occur, you know, like if this were being finalized in 2019, nobody would have expected that COVID was about to happen and then we'd probably be sitting there in 2020 going, wow, we really got to change some stuff, right? So if something like that is to occur, however big or small, are we anticipating that those happen, like attached to an agenda item in a given meeting, the same way we make budget amendments? Or are we anticipating sort of like after those retreats, there's some kind of like reaffirmation of the strategic plan? I guess that's my, my first question, just from like a process standpoint.
Well, and, and I know one of the, maybe some of the concerns are driving this is somehow we're locked into just these things and we can't be flexible or respond to the future. But some of these are pretty meaningful initiatives you, you've put into play and, you know, and that was another reason for the three years, you know, we need some continuity instead of from year to year, kind of leapfrogging to new things. We need to make sure that we're doing these important things you're asking us to do well. So I would say there, I think there's flexibility to revisit this, but we would hope that we've done, you know, we've captured, you know, the big issues and so that we can really start to attack those and make some headway, which that would be some of the iterative reporting that Josh was referring to. And Josh, please, you know, I don't mean to talk over you.
Yeah, and the, the huge value of this that we'll see from staff is the ability to, to think about what needs to be asked for in the budget process to achieve these initiatives and these strategies. So we need to give runway to our employees to, to dream up those ideas and how we can do this work, to then ask for what they need to accomplish it. And the more we change it midstream, the less we'll be able to do that. So, so I think that's really the goal is to make sure we're all in one accord as we enter into the budget process so we can, we can have clear vision and, and know how to plan and think about what we can, we can be doing.
And hopefully, you know, we've captured, so the last few budgets that have been approved have had amendments at the very end that have had some new ideas. And as y'all know, we've had some, some lag in trying to get those off the ground because we hadn't had the discussion on the front end, which we've been able to have here. So hopefully, as you look at this and, and the Commissioner Parker's comments and others, you know, make sure that we've got captured the spirit of what you're trying to achieve and, and the initiatives seem to support that. And then like Josh said, we'll take that next step and try to resource what we can in the upcoming budget. Of course, that's all subject to your approval, review and approval at the end.
Okay, yeah, this is making, it's making a lot of sense to me and I imagine we're just going to be kind of experiencing it as we go. And this might be even more of an adjustment for folks who've been on this body longer than me, but I can say, you know, as someone who's been here for, you know, about a year, a little over a year, kind of getting accustomed to how we've been expecting information and sort of, you know, getting business done and then, and then trying to figure out how this sort of jives with those existing processes. So like, for example, our agenda items always say like, this is tied to the following initiatives, right? So, or the following strategic goals. So I'm assuming that instead of those eight or whatever, super broad ones, our agenda items will now say it's tied to these like goal strategies and initiatives. Is that like an example of a difference we'll see? Yeah, seeing a lot of nodding. And so then, yeah, I guess I'm just still trying to wrap my head around and it doesn't seem super relevant right now except to sort of have expectations, but just like if we find ourselves wanting to either, like in a very minor way, like tweak the language of an initiative because of things we learned from our Human Relations Commission or our Inclusion Office, that would be like better language, you know, what, how does that play out in a formal way? Is that part of like an agenda item approval or is that part of the strategic plans update? And then for the, the more major things that hopefully don't occur, but if another COVID happens to us, you know, if like God forbid a tornado hits or something and we've really got to shake things up, then like, then how do we modify it that way? Does that make sense? It's like the two-part, the minor and major.
In the first area, language-wise, I think as, as long as the, the, the character of the initiative weren't fundamentally changed, I think we would probably, it would not have to rise to the level of something as formal as an agenda item. In the case of the latter, what, what I can say is that, that, that is partially why we plan, to, to be prepared for contingencies that, that we didn't maybe foresee. And so I think everybody recognizes that if something catastrophic were to happen, then we would probably have to revisit our priorities and, and build in the latitude necessary to, to kind of address the immediate need. I should add also that one of the next steps that we'll be taking internally is, is in naming some, some goal champions. And they'll be folks with sharp elbows sufficient to, to kind of get in and make room for this plan to, to grow and, and adjust if necessary. So, so yeah, it will be a living document to an extent.
Does that help answer that, Jesse?
Yeah, I think, I think so.
Size of modification you may see in this?
I'm, I'm wrapping my head around it. I'm imagining others are, well, I guess maybe the last thing I'm just trying to look for here is I'm hearing that in year three, there will be a more robust evaluation and update of the plan, which I have to assume would result in another vote. So maybe it'd be helpful for me to understand if and when there are any other scheduled votes. Like is there like an, is there going to be like an annual update where we might just copy paste reaffirm the whole thing? Or that's where we make some like minor revisions or something? You know what I mean? Or is it only every three years that there's a vote?
I don't know that it would rise to a vote. Maybe Assistant Manager Edwards, you can, you can, you can elucidate more, more on that, but I think, I think that once, once a year, at that once a year mark, we would probably reevaluate and say, hey, we're a little bit ahead of schedule. You know, we got forty-seven initiatives completed. You know, how do we want to proceed? Do we want to, do we want to delve more deeply into the remaining initiatives? What do we want to do? And then of course account for budget priorities, et cetera, as well in that discussion. But I don't, I don't know that it would necessarily rise to a vote.
I, I, I may recommend that we, we at least do a confirmation on an annual basis. You know, historically, if you go back ten, twelve, fifteen years ago, you know, while the, while the core may not shift very much, there'd be some additions and some modifications and some accentuation of particular goals. You know, I, I think that does set us up well for the budget cycle, just to say, hey, you know, we, we still care about affordable housing. Let's confirm that we still care about affordable housing. My two cents in the process.
I'll, I'll put two cents on your two cents and make it four.
All right. Another ninety-six and we'll get a cup of coffee. See, I've got Allison and then Melissa.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is really good stuff. A lot of what I had on my notes has been covered since, since I got my turn. Josh, it's really great to see you and, and hear your input because the retreat that I was in, you kept saying, wait for it? Just do this part. We're going to put it all together. So glad to hear you chiming in on, on your, on your plan. The I'm really, I can't remember when it was, but I really liked it when we started adding into the agenda what goal it met right before the recommendations. And I would be fine if, when this comes forward, that it was just the goal. It could just be goal number and A or B, even if it doesn't fit into one of the specific numbers under the A or B alphabet part, because I think that there's a lot of things that, like you say, you can't list them, but when they're in the agenda, you can fit them into a goal. Josh, I see you shaking your head. Is that what, where you're headed specifically with that?
Well, we got, we got to get into Clearpoint first, but I'll let Joseph speak to, to kind of how we can communicate, but we do need to truncate the language so we can continue to share the information in all these different venues, so.
Okay. Well, then before we get to that point, when will we vote on this so that it's no longer a draft?
It's going to be in the next agenda cycle, so we're, we're excited and that's why I wanted to present today is you'll see this coming forward in this next cycle.
Okay, okay, great. And Mr. Mayor, I really appreciate you going ahead and getting those dates way ahead of time. Of the three retreats that we had a doodle poll for, two of them were picked when I was unavailable. I do make plans that are pretty far ahead, so that's really going to help my, not miss out on all the fun that you guys have been having on the retreats that I missed.
My family will similarly appreciate it.
Yeah, there you go. Yeah, there you go. Anyway, this is all great and good input, good feedback. And great job, everybody. Thanks.
Melissa?
Yeah, I also want to thank Joseph and his staff for all their hard work. I mean, this, this was really a huge task. And, and for all the staff and, and neighborhood leaders who participated in the process. I feel like it was really collaborative and what we've got here is, is a pretty thorough document. And I just want to make sure that the public has access to it. I'm, I'm asking that it be posted prominently on our website with a summary of the, of process, the process that we went through to get here. So the public understands all the input that went into it and the intention behind it.
Yeah, I think we can, you know, the, the agenda item has, has, has a fairly robust history as well as the, the attachment, which is the, the goal strategy initiatives document. And then the presentation is also available. But yeah, I think we can, we can come up with a, a bit more robust package for, for, for public viewing, yes.
Yeah. I mean, if it were like, you know, one of those boxes on our main page or something that, that led you to, you know, a more interactive page that, that let folks know that, you know, all the, all the time and effort that's being put into it and the real sincere intention behind it.
Little, little policy scrapbook. Carol, do you have a question as follow-up? All right. All right, everybody. This, this is quite, quite a monumental set of work. Appreciate everybody contributing and, you know, we sometimes joke about the cat herding, but really Josh, Joseph, Blaine, I mean, clearly staff has done an enormous amount of work to translate our sticky notes into aspects for better circumstances for the people that we support. So thank you for all of that.
The entire staff really, really was extremely patient over the last six months, I'll say.
And, and I will say too, I want to thank all of you for your time and your engagement. It's, it's critical. And we were able to, in the process that, that Josh and Joseph helped to craft. And, and I just want to say this, that all of this is going, you know, results of this will be online in the form of ClearPoint. And our progress against those goals and initiatives will be tracked in ClearPoint. And this is a new thing, I think relatively new for the, for the public, so that they can go right to and get updates, you know, on a periodic basis on how things are progressing, on these really big monumental things that you want us work, you know, working on, broken down into, you know, workable pieces. So I, I, we have a lot of hope for that. There's been a ton of work that Joseph and, and folks in our various departments have put into that. There's not a meeting that doesn't go by that, that Josh and Joseph aren't a part of, particularly with our budget process where we're asking about performance measures and how does this relate to the goals? So I think you'll see the fruits of your labor reflected in, you know, better transparency, communication, and being able to follow all of this. It's a lot, right? It's a lot of information to follow. So I'm hopeful for that. And thank y'all for your engagement.
All right, everyone. I, I anticipated seven fifteen, but we did seven forty-five. So not so bad, everyone. Please go find food and beverage of your choice and have a fantastic evening. See you next week.
Everybody.
Thanks, y'all.